Welcome to our meeting today. Mrs. Logan, will you please call the O?
This is O'Connor. This is O'Connor.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Casper?
You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Mrs. Logan.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Board President comments, opening items, I don't really have any, just welcome everyone and welcome to our students. We're always glad to see you. Mr. Miller?
Welcome everyone as well. Just two quick things. We started today off with a fanfare at Union, so thanks to who could participate. I know that Mrs. Aguirre sent an email out to the board and this one you probably didn't hear about today's, but hoping you can make the next one. And then just a shout out to formerly Ms. Mindy Reichel, who's in charge of our Pre-Adventures Academy. She is now Dr. Reichel.
I saw that.
She got her dissertation passed, so congratulations.
Congratulations to her.
Congratulations to Dr. Reichel. That's it.
Mrs. Logan? I have nothing. Just let's get on to the students. Good part. Alright, students, finally, Mrs. Schaefer. Every year, one and a half million juniors take the PSAT and only 1% are named National Merit semifinalists. This year, six of these scholars are from Lakota. Tonight, you're going to hear from four of our students. They're here to share a little bit about themselves and their plans for the future. So welcome to Anya, Ryan, Sohan, and Yash.
Hi, your shot.
Um, hi. My name's Ryan Sibby. I go to Lakota West. I'm a senior. In college, I want to study computer science with the modern cybersecurity, mainly because of the experience I've had at our cybersecurity academy at Lakota West. And I just wanted to really give that a shout out because I felt like that's really impacted my life as a high school student.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Sohan Day. I'm also a senior at Lakota West. And I also want to go into computer science in college and also specialize in cybersecurity, as you said. And I also wanted to get a shout out to Lakota Cyber Program because that's really inspired me to do that. So thanks, thank you guys for an amazing high school experience.
Hello. My name's Josh Tibberwall and I'm also a senior at Lakota West. I plan on studying either business or economics in college, and the reason why is because of my econ and math classes throughout high school. And that's a shout I wanted to give.
Hi, my name's Anna Nicole and I'm also a senior at Lakota West. I am probably going to be pursuing the biomedical sciences track. I'm really interested in research. Not sure if it's environmental or biological yet, but it's kind of what I want to do. And I want to give a shout out to the biomedical program at West. That's been really cool.
Congratulations. We're very proud of all of you and can't wait to see what your future holds. Does the board have anything they would like to say?
No, just congratulations. Proud of you.
Great job, guys. A lot of hard work to get there.
You've represented your schools well, so thank you for that.
I'm good.
Yep. Picture, Mrs. Paul.
They feel even through their way now, right?
Okay, we have reached the first part of our public, the first opportunity for public comment. And as stated in Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy 0169.1, the Board values public expressions on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an efficient and orderly meeting. Therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules. Speakers are encouraged to register and intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting prior to speaking upon their arrival in the meeting. Speakers will be asked to start their comment by indicating their name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement may be made by a participant is limited to three minutes. Each statement must be direct to the presiding officer. No person may address or question a board member individually. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. To protect the employees' rights, the Board does not hear complaints about specific employees in public session. In the event a speaker has a complaint about a specific employee, he or she is encouraged to file such a complaint with the superintendent and the treasurer. Violation of these guidelines will result in a warning that the speaker has violated the rules and a second before future of a speaker's time. I think we have two people would like to speak. The first public comment is on agenda topics, and so I believe Tawana Lynn Keels is the first person I have. Is that correct? Would like to speak? You're welcome.
Good evening, fellow board members.
Good evening.
My name is Tawana Lynn Keels. I'm a resident of Westchester. I reside at 7750 Shenandoah Court. I'm the current president of the Butler County Educational Service Center Governing Board and former finance director for Butler County, working with the executive team and the Board of Commissioners. I'm also past president of the Ohio School Board Association. Established in 1914, the Butler County Educational Service Center provides programs and services to schools, government agencies, families, and children. Professional development and leadership and support for your school administration. We are recognized as one of the best places to work by the Cincinnati Enquirer this year. The Butler County ESC provides staffing, professional development, and other contracted services to school districts, including Lakota schools. And this is not a well-known fact in the community that we actually support Lakota schools. As a school board develops strategies to expand and enhance educational services for children in Lakota School District, I encourage you to continue to engage in open and transparent dialogue with the community. The Butler County ESC team are here to support you, the Lakota School Board, as well as the administrative team, as we have to this point, to help focus on what matters most, and that's the education of our children. Regarding the agenda, put on my fiscal hat tonight, regarding policy 6217, which is Agenda Item 11D, this evening, the Board will consider approval of a $1.9 million transfer from the General Operating Fund to the Budget Stabilization Set-Aside Fund, increasing the balance from $5 million to $7 million. This is something that the county did as well. We established a budget stabilization reserve, and we grew that fund every year. So I would like to state my support for the transfer of $1.9 million to the Rainy Day Fund and thank Jenny Logan for her continued support and leadership in the Treasurer's Office. And then finally, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the National Merit semifinalists. That's outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jesse?
Justice Jesse, 6564, Justice Lang, Liberty Township. I actually have questions about 169.1 that you mentioned a few minutes ago. It's been very confusing how it's been administered over the past three or four meetings to me. For example, two weeks ago, when the one gentleman kind of got out of hand and was escorted out, it was Mr. Lovell that actually requested the recess, and according to the rules, that's supposed to be you, correct? The Presiding Officer may call for a recess. That wasn't you, right? That was him. I don't understand that. On the public participation rules, number three says each statement made by a participant is limited to three minutes. But yet, on the actual policy, it states each statement made by a participant shall be limited to their three minutes duration unless extended by the presiding officer. Why do the rules not match the policy? I don't understand that. And to me, that says when Alicia White was up here six weeks ago pouring her heart out about her daughter committing suicide, you had the authority to let her finish her statement. And you blatantly said no. And I think that's sad, so I would like some explanation about that. And then I write about the difference between what's actually here and what you passed up. And the other thing is I did make an open records request for the Policy Committee today and found out that you met on 6/11, and that's when I guess all of the adjustments and changes came up. Hadn't met since then until, I guess, October the 1st, maybe? And, you know, I've went to the website and not seen where, you know, we can maybe attend because I thought that was kind of part of the deal. Now I understand there was no meeting. I'd kind of like to know why there was no meeting and maybe why some of these policies weren't broken up into smaller bundles to give the community more of an opportunity because I don't know if it went up Friday night? Or I know I saw the agenda on Saturday. So those are my questions. You have any questions? I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only two I have for Agenda Items. Mrs. Keels, thank you for your comments and your support and speaking today. Mr. Vogelmann? Can you please explain what the policy?
Committee meeting? Pardon? The committee meeting?
Yes, the committee meetings. And why there was no?
And I would like to also
defer that to
Yeah.
Okay. There's also, I was going to say Have a seat, Mr. Vogelmann.
First of all, if you recall, and I would have to go back to the board meeting, it was either June or July, we reorganized your board committees. And at that time, the Policy Committee was the only committee, when you reorganized, where you set the date and time of those meetings. And so that was done, it was either June or July, and I can't remember the exact date of that board meeting.
And those were all noticed.
And they're the first Friday of every month at 10:30. And we don't have a quorum, just like board meetings, which is what occurred the past two meetings, we were not able to hold those meetings on the first Friday of the month. So this past first Friday of the month was the first meeting that we have met since then.
In addition, there was a large Neola update that just came through, so that's why there is such a large quantity?
Yes, quite a few.
And many, I was just going to say, many of those, many of these policies are legal changes. Legal words that we are required to do based on House bills that have changed. If you look through some of these policies, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vogelmann, some of them are adding or taking away no more than one or two words. But again, those are things we are legally required to do. I don't know why Mr. Lovell called the recess, and in the heat of the moment, I'll be honest with you, I think we just were trying to get the crowd in the meeting under control. As far as being able to extend, yes, the chair is allowed to extend, but where do I pick and choose? Who do I decide to let speak 10 minutes and who do I cut off at three minutes? The reason we say three minutes is that we try to give everybody an equal amount of time. I don't want to have to be the person that picks and chooses who I want to speak and who I don't want to speak, and there's nobody I don't want to speak. It's your right to speak at a board meeting. It is, however, our right to have a policy in place. And the reason that I try to stick to the three minutes is so that it is fair to everyone, and it doesn't look like I'm picking and choosing. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
Nope.
No, the only thing I wanted
Mr. Jesse's question.
The only thing I wanted to add, though, is as far as recess, any board member
can call it.
can ask for a recess by a motion. So if there's a motion and a second and a vote, then a recess can happen. The Board President can call for a recess without a motion. So that's the difference there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Schaefer, you have a Butler Tech update?
Yes, so we have not had a Butler Tech board meeting since our last meeting. However, we have had a legislative visit up to Columbus that I wanted to update the board on. So I am part of the legislative team for Butler Tech. So we did take a trip on October 5th and 6th up to the State House. As part of Butler Tech's advocacy, they feel like it's important to meet the legislators on their turf here, but also it's important to go up to Columbus and meet them there to know how seriously we take advocacy for Butler Tech and our home schools. So we did go up and have that meeting, those meetings on October 5th and 6th. They were very well received. Instead of doing a specific request, like we often are, this was more of a thank you for everyone's work and support on the budget bill. So we thanked them and acknowledged all that hard work and all the good deeds and work that's going to be able to be done by lifting the cap and the changes in the weighted funding that it went through in that formula. But also reminded them that this is a two-year fix and that we hope that they will continue to keep this in the forefront and make this a longer-term fix and not just a short-term situation. And talked about how many kids we hope to be able to serve because of this, how we're already starting to see the changes, and hope that this is a long-term solution and not just a short-term solution for our public schools in the state of Ohio. The people we met with were Senator Wilson, Senator Lang, Representative Carruthers, Representative Hall and Rips, Representative Abrams, who is the Assistant Majority Whip. We also met with Senator Blessings and Representative Gross. We had a good conversation with Representative Wang about his Business First Caucus, but how that they absolutely recognize that if they don't have a ready workforce for that Business First Caucus, they're not going to be able to fulfill businesses' needs without quality education and a quality workforce. So we felt like we've made some good strides there. So I felt like it was a very beneficial meeting. They're working on capital budgets there, and everyone's like, so you're really not asking us for anything on that side? And it was nice to be able to say, no, this is just to say thank you for the work you've done. And again, that we hope that that continues going forward. So a very productive two days.
Any questions? Policy. Now you get to come to the microphone, Mr. Vogelmann.
Before you this evening for your first read, as was mentioned, there are 35 policies up. We'll mention that 25 of those are from the August update from Neola. And then there's a handful of others that either we were still looking at or there were a couple that were put on hold back on the June 14th board meeting after their first read. So that's why there's so many at this time, unfortunate. But we also try and schedule with our Neola representative, Mr. Burkhardt. He has 80 other school districts to get to. So time is trying to match up his schedule and ours at the same time. So I'll try and just give a brief, brief. I don't think anyone wants to go over all 35 in depth, but just kind of show you where they're coming from. I'll mention the ones that are kind of our revisions and then the ones that were Neola revisions and kind of let everyone know why it was revised and what House bill, what legal language did with it, so bear with me. The first one up, if we go in numerical or by law, 0147, compensation, this is actually a revision from the Lakota Policy Committee. Similar to other employees, they thought it was important to add that part about approval of training and programs and conferences. Bylaw 0165.2, this is a holdover from the June 14th board meeting. It was requested to be put back on with no changes from the original intent, and that was a revision done back in late winter from Frost Brown and Todd. Bylaw 0169.1, the public participation, this is a Neola revision. The new revisions to this bylaw are in line with the recent decision, the U.S. District Court of the Sixth Circuit that came out a couple of months ago. So those changes have been made due to that. Policy 1530, evaluation of principals. This is updating the principal evaluation system that will line up since we are using a new Ohio teacher evaluation system. We call OTES 2.0. It's just matching up the language between the principals and the teachers now. The three policies I'll put together are Policy 1617, 3217, and 4217. 1617, for the crowd to know, if it starts with a 1, it's administration. 1617 did not exist, so this is a new for 1617. It talks about weapons. They thought maybe it'd be a good idea to have a rule for administrators and weapons since they hadn't had one before this one. But we do have one in the 3000s and 4000s for classified and certified staff. So that weapons is a Neola update as well. It's from Ohio Supreme Court recently issued decision and part of House Bill 99 that was introduced in February. I wouldn't be surprised if we see this bill again. So don't be surprised if next time you see me up here, we're talking about these policies again because it's still circling around, going around the legislation rounds in Columbus. There are four policies together that were anti-harassment. That would be your 1662, 3362, 4362, and 5517. Those were also pulled on the June 14th board meeting for first reads and put back on the agenda. They were revised back in June due to U.S. Department of Education language updates and definitions and roles and responsibilities. Policy 2271, College Credit Plus, this is part of House Bill 110 to include a modification to College Credit Plus program and establishes remediation-free option for students. Policy 237001, Blended Learning. This also reflects changes in House Bill 110, modifying the definition of blended learning. Policy 3220, Standards-Based Teacher Evaluation. This is a Lakota edit. This is not a Neola edit. This is Lakota because we have updated our language based off negotiations in the spring on our contract language. And so some of the removals that took place are due to the update in the contract language. Next two policies I put together are Policy 5111 and 511102. These are educational opportunities for military children. This is a Neola revision. This is to include new enrollment and education requirements for children of military families, making it a little easier for them to enroll as part of House Bill 244. Policy 5200, attendance. This has reflected also changes in House Bill 110. That's part of college visits and also the definition of blended learning as we're redefining blended learning in the earlier policy 2370. Policy 5336, care students with diabetes. This is a special update that was from March 2021 in response to House Bill 231. We are not using the AG that's listed in there. It's an optional AG, so we just have to remove that line that says refer to the AG because we don't have it. Next one would be Policy 5350, student mental health. These are new requirements mandated by the Safety and Violence Education Students Act of March of 2021. If you notice, it's basically working ahead toward the 2324 school year to embed into the curriculum for students. Policy 5464, early high school graduation. This reflects the changes of testing requirements. It used to talk about sophomores, but now we're talking about any grade, so it's just updating that language. 5516, student hazing. This is part of Senate Bill 126 to revise the language. Policy used to be called anti-hazing, but now it's just called student hazing. Almost there. Hang with me. Policy 563001, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. These are changes to Ohio Administrative Code 3301. It's subsequent issuance from Ohio Department of Education on PBIS, as we call it for short, Butler. And our team has been aware of this and working toward it since earlier this year when we were made aware. Had to model our policy and procedures starting this past July. Policy 5722, School-Sponsored Publications and Productions. You, this is one of those weird things. You have to reject it. You're not taking it, you're rejecting it because you're not taking the changes. With this policy ties a Neola optional policy about social media. Since we don't use that policy or that AG, we don't need to update what they gave us, so we're just rejecting the update. We still have the policy. We use that policy. We're just not taking the update, which is an option since it refers to an optional policy. Policy 6114, Cost Principles. This is new guidance for district regarding expenditure of federal funds with the ESRA funds. New rules to follow. Ms. Logan enjoys all of those. Policy 7300, Disposition of Real Property. This is, once again, House Bill 110. Modified definition of what are unused school facilities and how to dispose of those facilities. Policy 7450, Property Inventory. There's no language to that. This is one. There's no language change to this policy. It's just there's another administrative code that goes at the top of the policy. So no language change. It's just referencing another Ohio Administrative Code, too. The next two I put together, 754003 and 754004. This is a Lakota cleanup. This has been sitting in our draft folder since a tech update was done a couple of years ago. I can't explain to you why it never made it to the agenda for a first read and how it kind of slipped through, but I've been trying to clean up policies in the draft, and I noticed that this one has been in there. And we've been operating with the idea that this is our active policy on acceptable use anyways, so we need to officially get it adopted and approved. Policy 8330, Student Records. This is change in federal rule to release district assigned email addresses to military recruiters if requested. Policy 8400, School Safety. Districts are now required to create, train, and utilize threat assessment teams at each building. Policy 8462, Student Abuse and Neglect. This is update to incorporate the new requirements mandated by that same Safety and Violence Act I mentioned earlier about suicide awareness that has to be in the curriculum by 2324. Policy 8510, this is a wellness update. Updated requirements and regulations based on the triennial assessment done by the U.S. Department of Education. No, no, U.S. Department of Agriculture. We went back to the template to make sure we had all the things that we needed based on that visit. And so we used some of the items from the template that we weren't previously using. So that's the reason for that update. Policy 8600, Transportation. This is part of House Bill 110 again. Change the number of provisions for community and non-public school transportation. Policy 8651, Non-Routine Use of School Buses. This is, once again, House Bill 110, requires school district to obtain approval of the vehicle and operator as a commercial carrier subject to the Ohio Department of Transportation. And finally, Policy 8740, Bonding. This is a new insurance option that's made available through House Bill 291.
You, Mr. Vogelmann? Very well done. He's taking musical water.
Drying out a little bit, but we'll be okay. So I'm sure you may have some questions. I'll do my best to answer them. If not, I will find out and get back to you. We did have a policy meeting on October 1st. Ms. Schaefer, Mr. Lovell, myself, Ms. Logan, Mr. Miller, and our Neola representative, Mr. Burkhardt, were there when we covered these policies.
Thank you to all of you for your
And then Mr. Vogelmann stayed to do the guidelines as well, so I think he was with a representative from Neola for what, four and a half hours?
Four and a half hours on a Friday.
Oh, norm.
You're familiar with Mr. Burkhardt. Yes, four and a half hours. I needed a break but didn't get one.
Who has questions for Mr. Vogelmann? Mrs. O'Connor, you told me you had a few?
I do have a few, Rob, if you don't mind staying up there a little bit longer.
No, we're good.
We'll start with 0147, and that's compensation, attendance of the board, participation in training programs, conferences, requires prior board approval. I think our practice has been that that's approved at our organizational meeting that individual members can attend based on it coming out of the service fund. So this seems to be a change in our practice. Can you explain it?
I'd have to defer to Ms. Schaefer and Mr. Lovell. They brought the recommendation to me. I just simply was the facilitator.
So we had said that, like in the past, we often do approve things at that organizational meeting. But we thought that we could, in the interest of making it more apparent when we are traveling, that we can still approve things at our organizational meeting, like if we're going to OSBA or an SBA or any travel. But like similar to the practices that they do at Butler Tech, that there is then an approval at future board meetings, just if there is going to be any other travel, so then it can be reported and people are just aware so we can do a report back at our board meetings. So then it can be reported and people are just aware, so we can do a report back at our board meetings of any travel that's done by board members.
So that it was just, has there been some issue that this was brought forward by you and Mr. Lovell?
Um, no, it was just, again, it's, for me, it was um. A transparency issue, it's how Butler Tech has done things, so for me, it was a difference in how they operate, and I just thought it might be. A good way for us to operate to make it so everyone is aware of travel that happens with the board.
Okay. Zero-one-six-five-point-two, special meetings. I referenced a concern with this in the June meeting, and I'm not sure that there was any discussion given to the concern that I referenced. Which was, I had requested that there be some type of additional, just a one line, that every effort will be made to ensure that all five board members can attend special meetings if possible. I think it'd be good to state that in policy, we want to be sure that our board is all present as much as we can.
That was discussed, but the two board members did not want to take that recommendation.
Well, and the Neola rep as well said that you already do that in practice, so that adding more to policy than is necessary. Is not recommended, if you're already doing that in practice, but it wasn't wise to add more because things that are subjective, then it can be questioned of. Did you follow that or didn't you, and that's such a subjective line? And since we are, do that in practice, that it's hard to put things in that are very subjective in policy. So that was the discussion with our Neola rep as well.
I think the difference is that when you put it into policy, you're saying that is our intent. And regardless of who's in charge, you make sure that everyone's there and there's an accountability back to all board members to make sure that they're included, so. I understand what you're saying, I disagree with you on that, I think that's not as inclusive as it could be.
Don't we already do that though, I mean, I don't believe I've ever been a part of a special meeting for years or we all haven't been.
But policy solidifies our practices. And it makes clear what the intent is regardless of who the leadership is on the board.
Okay, but what, okay, I understand.
Zero-one-six-nine-point-one, and this is one that um, Mr. Jesse also referenced, and there are a couple of pieces I wanted to talk through on this. This is about public participation in our meetings. And for me as a board member, I really think that um. Some of the tone and some of the changes that were made even from the June version to this version, it did change, we were became. More stringent might not be the best word, but more stringent in allowing participation, and. I'm not sure that I agree that that's the direction we want to go, I think we need to be as open as possible to our community members participating in our meetings. So there were a couple of specific pieces here. C, which is signing in at the beginning of the meeting, and I remember we discussed this in June. And talked about if something happens during the meeting then, or somebody arrives later, then the sign-in sheet has come up, they don't have an opportunity to talk. And I think again, if our intent is to allow as much participation as possible, maybe there's another sheet at the back of the room for the second public comment section. Things happen during the meeting, people would like to comment on that in the final session, we're not allowing that opportunity. For those occasions, and again, I would lean to have more leniency and more involvement by the public. So I would like to see us change beginning in that, um, just to allow more opportunity for weigh-in. J, which was, it talks about one thirty-minute session. And by practice, it says should be, it's invited, uh, shall be limited to thirty minutes. We actually do two sessions of thirty minutes, and I think that should be reflected in policy.
So if you're looking at J.
Yeah.
The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited thirty minutes.
Right, but then if you go, we talked about this and how to reflect it appropriately in this, and we believe. The next to the last sentence where it says the portions. Of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to thirty minutes, unless extended. So we added the S to make sure that it, it's more than one.
So they know it's more than one.
Okay, that works. If we removed a comment. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic was the original, and we're now changing it to no participant shall speak more than once. So if you wanted someone, if somebody wanted to speak on two different topics, perhaps the agenda part and then the second. We're saying they can't partic- they can't speak more than once, and I'm not sure why we made that change.
It, it became a discussion of how do you arbitrate that when somebody is at the mic, how if they start speaking. It becomes a decision of, okay, is that the same topic, is it a different topic, if they're halfway through? Who gets to decide if that's the same topic? And again, many of these revisions that Neola brought forward were from lawsuits. And so um, the Neola rep also said of his eighty districts, we were the only ones that allowed for two public comment sections. So he felt that it was not wise to have somebody up there, and again, it was that gray area who was trying to keep us out of the gray. Of putting us or the presiding officer in a position of that they're trying to listen to go, okay, is this the same subject? Is that it, is this a different subject? They're trying to arbitrate that while somebody's speaking, and then you get into a situation where they cut somebody off, that person doesn't feel it was the same subject and they were cut off. And then you have a lawsuit, or again, it becomes not black and white and you're putting yourself in a situation where it's gray. And so that's why we had, again, extensive conversation in our meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think we spent fifty-five minutes on this policy. That's what we started with, so.
Right, well, we should be spending that kind of time on.
Yeah, a- and so like we went round and round, and it became, we don't want to have a situation where somebody's having to decide on the fly as they're listening. Is this or isn't this the same subject, and then somebody feels that they were speaking on something else, somebody else feels they, they weren't. And how do you arbitrate that? And it just opens you up to interpretation, and we felt like it just makes it cleaner if we just say. You have one opportunity, and again, because we have so many other opportunities and ways to speak out for people. We also, we kind of had that same conversation of, if you haven't signed up at the beginning of the meeting and you like hear something. That you want to react to during the meeting and you can't speak then, and that second opportunity for public comment. We talked a little bit about, it's that whole coach's philosophy. Is it better to be able to jump up and be able to speak? Or you still have the opportunity to write an email or respond to us and let us know that way? And that might be better than in the heat of the moment reacting at the mic, because at that point, anything we would have voted on, we would have already voted. So they're not going to be impacting any action that we take at that point, and they still have an opportunity to reach out to us. And get in contact with us prior to the next meeting, so it might be better for somebody not to jump up. And react to something immediately and to do it via email or other means that they have to reach out to us or speak to us after the meeting. Rather than signing up in the middle of the meeting and moving forward, so that was a piece of the discussion as well.
And that, that was the exact comments I was going to make, that, that was a discussion for a while.
Yeah, so again, it, it's hard to know, you know, what is the best way to do that? And, you know, again, we, there was advice to just get rid of the second public comment entirely, which is not where we landed, but. You know, but at the same time, we restricted our community from being able to speak as much as they can presently at meetings. And I, I don't believe that's the right direction to go, I don't think that inspires trust, I don't think that looks transparent. So I, I have questions on several of these points, I've made them, I understand what your thinking was. I don't agree with the thinking, but I understand what the thinking was. And I think it's really important in our committee meetings that we have some diverse points of view so that it, it's not um. The entire community being represented to some extent, I'm concerned about this policy a lot. I don't think we should be restricting our community from speaking to us. And if it's more than once and everyone at the meeting and has an opportunity to speak first before they come back again. I would be fine with that as a compromise to make sure that everyone has an opportunity that wants to speak, but. If there's open time left in those sessions, I think we should allow other people to come back up again if they want to. So that's where I'm sitting on that. Um, the anti harassment policy lab, which was one-six-six-two. And I also brought this one up at the June meeting. And I had asked for a review by the committee of a specific wording under prohibited acts, and I can't believe I have to say this again, but it was about the lingerie, desiring a romantic relationship. Is that really necessary in policy?
Unfortunately, yes, there, because.
You could actually.
I can share with you the.
Subjective though, really?
Absolutely.
Was that based on a court case?
Absolutely, I remember it.
You remember it?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in Butler County.
We're going to have to have a conversation about that, I think.
Yes, so, and, and the thing to remember with that is, it's always remember, people always tell me when you're reading, this is just kind of, you look for the word therefore. Because when you see the word therefore, it's there for a reason, and so they added it there for a reason. Because they've had to handle that case before.
So you reviewed all of that language? Yep, okay. There's so many comments to make here.
Fifty-three fifty, student mental health and suicide prevention. I would like to make a suggestion, it's the fourth paragraph down, the board shall use a training program that is approved by the O D E department. And this is in regard um to mental health conditions and that kind of thing. I believe the word approve should be included there because the board should be approving that kind of curriculum. So I think it should say the board shall approve. For use, a training program that is approved by O D E. Um, O D E is not our local community, and we represent our local community, I don't think we should just accept training programs approved by O D E. There's another paragraph a little later on, uh, same insertion there. The board shall approve for use. An evidence-based awareness and prevention curriculum approved by O D E for the same reason.
So would you like to pull that one for first read?
I'd like to pull all of these that I'm talking about, Rob, yes, I would like you to do that.
Okay, so I just, if we capture that, Mrs. Logan, I'm not sure how that takes place, but I'm sure, it looks like you still have more, so we'll keep going.
Yeah, I know, just a few more. Uh, this is actually a request for the board, it's not about the policy, but fifty-six thirty talks about um. Intervention and limited use of restraint and, and seclusion. I would like to have, whether it's a public one or not, a board report about what we're currently doing in the district to really understand that, which.
We are working on that now.
Well, my request is timely then. And do you know when we might see that?
Uh, no, we talked about it at the end of the day, uh, Mr. Longworth did, but I'll, I'll let you know.
I would appreciate that, that, it brings a lot of questions to mind that I'd like to ask once we have a report in front of us. Thank you for explaining fifty-seven twenty-two and the rejection, that means we're sticking with the current policy. Okay. The student staff technology, this is seventy-five forty. This is a concerning paragraph to me, whether it's the policy question or the practice and process question. It's down at the bottom of the first page. First, the board may not be able to technologically limit access through its technology resources to only those services and resources. That have been authorized for the purpose of instruction, study, and research related to the curriculum. That feels really open-ended, that there is no approval going on on resources being used in our curriculum. I don't know if that's how that's intended, but that's how I read that, and I have grave concern about that.
I think that we have the clarification for it.
Thank you. And I would also request, um, my final request. This was thirty-five policies, uh, some were just a page, but most were multi-page, anywhere from four to ten pages. And we received it on a Friday for approval first read on a Monday. That is, that's a lot to ask, so I would ask that as soon as that policy meeting is over, that the entire board. Who will be expected to approve this, get it before the first read, just to give us time to really delve into it, to do our due diligence. Thank you, thank you, I'm done.
Any, anybody else?
No, thank you for your work. Like those long, long meetings.
That was a long meeting.
Thank you.
Legislative, we'll start with Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan.
I think probably the, the, there's a couple of pieces flowing out there, but with um election season going on, there's, you know, there's things going on that legislators are doing right now, but. Part one that I know you all heard about is House Bill two-ninety, which is the backpack bill, so we've been getting um. Updates and emails about that every single day, so I'd encourage you to, to take a look at that um when you can. Um, if it fully goes into effect, and I would hope that it wouldn't, but it would cost State of Ohio billions of dollars, so.
Speak into your mind.
It would cost about several billion dollars if it slowly goes into effect for the State of Ohio. I don't think it could get to that point, but I would just encourage you all to take a look at House Bill two-ninety. Um, the, another thing that um is going on, I know that H R is aware of it too, is, you know, working on some legislator, legislation to ease up on some of the. Guidelines or requirements for getting your substitute license, something that would be welcome in today's day and age of not being able to get subs. So, that's all I have for right now. Jenny?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to mention was the backpack bill, and um, it's fifty-five, five thousand five hundred fifty dollars for. Students below high school, high school students is um seventy-five hundred. There is no local share applied to that, it would be a scholarship for every child. Whoever wanted to take advantage of that, it would not be based on um income need or any of that, so.
Report card.
More information is coming in, and like Matt said, um. The financial pieces, the financial impact is being analyzed, um, so. We'll, we'll continue to look into it and continue to contact our legislators about it too.
And Jenny, I was going to speak about the same thing, and I just wanted to emphasize that would. Create that scholarship to all students in Ohio, and the cost is unknown, millions, it's also not clear how that would impact. The fair funding plan that was just put into place, so I think that's. Something that we need to continue to watch and see where that goes. Uh, just a reminder, OSBA Southwest Regional Fall Conference will be this Thursday at the War and Career Center, and I think almost everyone is going to that.
Did I see something that said it was at Scarlet Oaks, so is it War and Career? I saw a piece.
I think it is Scarlet Oaks.
I'm sorry, I was sending you in the wrong direction.
You were.
I'm not sure.
I would have had a good time by myself, I guess, I'm sorry about that. You'd have been there all of Scarlet Oaks, and it, what time does it start, is it?
Uh, five-thirty, okay. That's, that's all I have.
It is?
Really?
You're just so good at that. Okay, Mr. Miller, you are up with the administrative update.
Thank you, I have um two items under administrative update, the first one, I'm going to ask. Uh, Mrs. Lori Brown to come up to the mic, who's our Director of Student Services, to talk about S E L, social emotional learning in Lakota. And give us an update on that, I know she met with D P C last week, so heard good things, and um, once I heard that, I asked her to. Come here and speak to all of you, so that's your buildup, um, before I, so now I'm going to keep talking for a second. Um, there are, um, a lot of people do a lot of things at Central Office for our students and for our staff, who probably is not as recognized as much as she should be. So she's one of those quiet, um, you know, we called you quiet before, quiet, um. Administrators who um get a lot done um behind the scenes and um challenge us on a daily basis to do what's best for our kids, so. That's your buildup, now I'll let you go.
Can I suggest you tilt that mic down so we can hear you?
Try not to mess it up.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay? Thank you, Mr. Miller, that was. Very wonderful of you, thank you. Um, my name's Lori Brown, I'm the Director of Student Services here at Lakota, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on social emotional learning. And it's a topic I could talk about forever, so I, I limit myself and try to keep to my notes here, but. I appreciate you taking time to learn about uh all the great things we've got going on in Lakota. So I thought I'd start with a little background. So back in the nineties, a group of scholars from multiple fields like emotional intelligence, child development. Prevention science, bullying prevention, public health, they all came together uh to try to identify this.
prevention science, bullying prevention, public health, they all came together, uh, to try to identify this, the key skills and competencies that students need to successfully navigate life and school. And from that collaboration came the term S E L, or social emotional learning. So on the left side of the screen here, you'll kind of see the definition of what that is. So S E L is the process through which, can you see those? I'm sorry, I apologize. I should have passed these out to you in advance, I apologize. Uh, but S E L is the process through which all young adults and people acquire, apply the knowledge, skills and attitudes to develop healthy identities, um, where they learn to manage emotions and achieve personal and collective goals. Where they feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships and make responsible and caring decisions. So when we say S E L, it's a very broad term. Um, it's, it's something that kind of collectively is all the, what we used to call soft skills kind of things. So since then, they focused a lot of research, this group that got together and kind of put this term, terminology together, uh, put together some research and over the years, an abundance of research studies have proved that implementation, successful implementation of S E L in schools leads to improved academic performance, improved attendance, uh, and improved classroom behavior, increased ability to manage stress and depression, which we do have some numbers on that in our district of how prevalent that is in our young people, unfortunately. Um, and, and better attitude about self, others in school, and then less out-of-school suspensions. Um, so we've seen a lot of great research around the successful implementation of, uh, S E L. So, apologize. Through that formation and through that research, they've come up with this framework that is sitting behind me. So the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning put together this, uh, framework that kind of ties all the community, family partnerships together, and identified five domains, uh, five competency areas that students' social emotional learning skills should fall into. So those domains, I don't know if you can see them on the screen, are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So anything that we do in the terms of S E L should fall in one of those five domain areas. So, uh, in two thousand nineteen, the State of Ohio actually jumped on board with this quite a bit. So I took a picture here of their each child, our future, which is our strategic plan that we're currently under from the, um, Ohio Department of Education. And in that, the second picture on the right here, they've identified four equal learning domains that contribute to the holistic success of each child. So those foundational areas are foundational knowledge and skills, well-rounded content, leadership and reasoning skills, and finally, social emotional learning. So essentially, the State of Ohio and their strategic plan said, this is one-fourth of all of the great things that we need to do in schools. So the priority was set in that strategic plan that we are currently under now. So this graphic from the left is from the Ohio Department of Ed, and talking about how they want to implement social emotional learning in all the state schools. So on the right side, you'll see, um, what they developed was our social emotional learning standards. So students from grades, grades K through twelve, we have, um, social emotional standards. It's about sixty standards per grade band, so it's a lot. But they put that down, we actually had two of our staff members that were a part of building the standards, so we kind of feel like we had the inside scoop on that, which was phenomenal. Um, but each of those, all of those sixty standards are grouped around those five competency areas in the graphic I showed before. Um, so they can be implemented wherever they see fit. It's, it's, I've always said the question, or said the statement, when we get new math standards, uh, I always know that the math teachers are gonna teach that standard, but when we got the S E L standards, the question was, who teaches that? And the answer from the State of Ohio was, anybody and everybody. Right, so, um, from that, to get to kind of where we're working today, uh, the framework also gave us these ten school-wide indicators of S E L. Meaning these are all the places, this is where S E L happens throughout schools. Um, so this is the list of different things, and I've chosen, I'm gonna highlight a couple of these today. Uh, but it gives us guidance and support for where and how S E L comes into play. Uh, so you can see, uh, some examples are explicit S E L instruction, meaning in those standards, direct instruction on those standards. Um, there's S E L that can be integrated into academic instruction, which is, I think, probably more of what, uh, we've been doing all along. You know, this has been going on in schools forever. It's how to tie in something that teaches some soft skills in with your academic skills. Uh, you, having youth voice and engagement is an important, uh, skill for, for students to learn. Supportive school climates and classroom climates, focusing on adult S E L, which in this time since COVID has come, we've learned that that is just as important as the S E L learning of all of our students is to keep our adults, uh, in a good place. Supportive discipline, a continuum of integrated supports, authentic family partnerships, aligned community partnerships, and systems for continuous support. So to show you where we've come so far in this work, um, I kind of wanted to use these indicators as a, as a organizational frame of reference, so I've chosen to highlight a couple of them tonight. So explicit S E L instruction, which just means, explicit just means teaching it directly, right? Um, so we, one of the big areas that we have is our S E L special in grades K through six. Um, so that is focused on any social emotional standards. We have seven teachers that, um, you know, work through those standards and develop lessons to work with students during their specials time. It, it, one of the great things is we haven't chosen kind of a standard, um, you know, just grab this, this curriculum and implement it because we wanted to implement with, one of the policies that Rob was talking about was P B I S, that positive behavior interventions and supports. And we want to tie in with what the data of the building is telling us that students need instruction in different soft skill areas or executive functioning or things like that. So each building can utilize their data to implement into that class as well. Uh, it develops a common language, which we've learned is, is extremely important when we're talking about social emotional learning. Just talking about things the same way helps kids kind of, uh, keep the skill as time moves on. Um, it's an extension of the lessons that have been taught by our, our school counselors over the years. So I'm not sure how many are aware, but our school counselors have been going into classrooms for years and teaching a couple of these lessons, and what they say every year is, man, we wish we could do this more. Um, so this is a big extension of that time and effort, uh, into those classrooms. And then I have identified, uh, um, sources of strength in there, which is a program, um, that we kind of tie into in several lessons across the, um, standards, uh, but it is a suicide prevention program, but it's also works on building strength. So students look at a wheel of strengths and talk about, um, what lifts them up, what, what gives them strength when they're going through hard things, um, and kind of builds out those areas through, through some of those lessons there. Um, another way is through our written education plans, so those are the plans that our students who are served as gifted students receive what we call a W E P, a written education plan. And we've implemented having an S E L goal and an academic goal, because we found with our gifted learners, sometimes those S E L areas are the areas that need kind of the attention the most, so, um, we found a lot of success with that. And then lastly, uh, just highlighting college and career readiness, that is an S E L skill. Knowing what your interests are and what you're, um, good at, what your strengths are, uh, is a great way to build those S E L soft skills. Um, and I put a program called Naviance in there, I'm not sure how many of you have heard of that, but it's a great program that students can go on and do a strength finder assessment and connect to colleges and, um, different programs that they might be interested in. Okay. Youth voice and engagement. Um, one of the great ways that we're looking at this right now is through, uh, student surveying. Um, and we're using a Panorama survey in grades three through eight. Um, we started this with our gifted learners and we've expanded it to our grades three through eight. Uh, but there's questions aligned to the competencies, uh, those, uh, S E L standards. And they're also, we've chosen ones that align to our Lakota's Portrait of a Graduate. So Portrait of Graduate is that big picture idea that we want all Lakota students to be. Uh, these questions kind of align so we can see the progress towards that as students go closer to graduation. Um, some sample questions, uh, in case you're interested, here, I pulled some out. So it asks questions like, in the past thirty days, how often were you polite to adults? How carefully did you listen to others' point of view? How often did you come prepared to class? How often did you get your work done right away instead of waiting till the last minute? How often did you remain calm even when someone was bothering you or saying bad things? How often did you keep your temper under control? And overall, how hard do you try in class? Those are some examples of, of those survey questions. So we use those for individual student goal setting, that they can set goals for themselves and monitor those throughout the year. And for identification of any needs that are, are acting as barriers to academic progress. So in our work with Panorama, we have found that the two main areas that show up in our students' data is that sense of belonging piece, which through that, we can also see that that's a national trend of just, you know, feeling like that you're a part of your school and, and, um, a part of your community. And the second is just emotional regulation, which isn't necessarily, um, having a behavioral outburst, but maybe, you know, when you, when you were able, when you needed to calm down, were you able to calm down, kind of things. And then another way we engage, uh, youth voice and engagement is through our peer-led groups. So a lot of you might be familiar with Hope Squad, which is a suicide prevention peer-to-peer group. Um, Sources of Strength, which is the curriculum I was talking about in the three to sixth grade. Uh, we have in the seventh and eighth grade peer-led groups around sources of strength, and they, uh, create campaigns to build awareness to strength-building things for students. So Plains Junior is an example here, they did a, an activity on positive mentors. And the kids created a campaign that, uh, kind of built up and, uh, shined light on who positive, positive mentors were in students' lives. Okay. Nice. Supportive school and classroom climates, this kind of ties into, and I think, Mrs. O'Connor, you were asking for an update on some of this P B I F stuff. But that's some of the areas that we're working on, which is basically looking at your holistic data on, uh, discipline and looking at what can we do proactively or preventatively to help, uh, students in the areas that they're showing they're struggling in. And those are all the barriers that are keeping them from their academics, so we want to definitely work on that. Uh, PAX is something we've implemented in our K-two buildings, where, uh, it's a set of strategies where students learn in, uh, self-management skills while collaborating to make their, uh, classroom environment peaceful and productive. Um, so the teachers have all been trained in those skill sets and, um, working with the students on that. I don't know if any of you have been at a K-two building, you might have seen PAX Quiet or seen Harmonicas around teachers' decks. It's, it's a lot of different things, but, um, definitely evidence-based, trauma-informed, uh, practices to kind of keep a, a peaceful and productive environment. And then all the work we do on relationship building, which we've always known has, is so important, and, um, that definitely falls in this supportive climate kind of category. And the last one I'll highlight is our aligned community partnerships. So we work with, uh, Mindpiece, um, that they help us to identify partners within the community to provide school-based mental health therapists in all of our buildings. So we have partnerships with Children's Hospital Solutions and Catalysts. And they all provide, uh, school-based mental health therapists in our buildings, and we work with them, uh, through all those processes and identify needs and, and get our kids served. Uh, Envision Partnerships and Companions on a Journey are great partners of ours that come in and offer groups that are specific to student needs. Um, Companions on a Journey is specifically a grief, grief-based group. Um, so we do have a lot of partnerships that kind of tie in with that piece, but we're always looking for to expand our partnerships and, and to continue to add those things in. So I'll leave you with kind of our next steps. And I, uh, our biggest things is just to continue moving forward. So when I first started in this position several years ago, there were lots of great things going on individually, but the work was to really get some consistency put together around that. Um, so we're working to build out some more consistent school-wide indicators, as I mentioned before. Um, we do have a lot of work around multi-tiered systems of support, trying to tie in, uh, just all the systems in the school building to make sure they're functioning most effectively and efficiently for the needs of our kids. Continue to integrate skills into the academics, so the more that we can get, um, some of the standards met within the academic standards, it's a two-for-one special, that's great for us. And then continue to look for appropriate partners in the work, is, is kind of our steps moving forward. So that's all I brought for you tonight, and I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and hope this was helpful. Again, my name is Lori Brown, and you can email me at Lori, L O R I dot Brown at Lakota online dot com. Or you can call Central Office and they can connect you to my extension.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Lori, I did have a few questions, but I wanted to be sure it could be heard, so, um, thank you for that. The level of detail was really helpful, thank you for that. Specific programs that we're using for this, I saw Panorama, Castle, are there any others?
Um, so Castle is a framework, it's not a program.
Okay.
And Panorama is a surveying tool, it is also not a program. Um, it's just a, uh, the, the survey questions are norm-referenced, and, um, they do provide, uh, analytic tools for us to kind of sort and shift the data. Um, but, uh, the only other one I would say I mentioned is Sources of Strength. Um, that is an evidence-based suicide prevention program, and that's more of a curriculum.
Thank you for that. You know, I think there's a lot of concern at the national level about this social emotional learning and how is it being used? And, uh, some of the questions that I hear center around, are the questions invasive and
It's a great question.
Getting into family issues that maybe parents are not comfortable with, and I, I think it's hard to, um, separate the wheat from the chaff, so to speak. So we know that there's classroom management and behavior management involved. We know that we start to see struggles in students that could turn into more serious issues, and so that's something to address as early as we can. We look at self-regulation, which we want all of our students to learn. And, um, proactively trying to deal with issues before they become much bigger issues. Can you address parent privacy and the invasive question part, and how do we deal with that?
Sure, and I am careful about not going past that line. Right, and that's a, that's a great question, and I can, um, when we review those questions, none of them are asking anything that's, talking about family life or personal, personal history, we don't ask about traumas, we, nothing like that. All of the questions are based on rating a skill set within yourself. So it doesn't, uh, it, uh, some of the examples I gave, you know, were you able to calm down the last time that you were upset? Uh, it's all those, that level of questioning of just an introspective look. Um, the only other questions that we may ask, um, not in Panorama, uh, but there are, uh, surveys that like Butler County asked us to do around drug and substance abuse.
The Pride Survey.
Yes, it's got a new name now, and I can't remember, it's Prevention First or something like that, but, um, that comes out every two years, and that does ask more questions about, you know, have you had access to alcohol and drugs? It asks about usage and unsafe behaviors. Um, that's more data used for programming that's put forth by the county. But none of the surveying questions that we would ask around Panorama are anything more than rating skills for yourself, kind of those internal skills.
So you review those questions before they're used?
Mm-hmm.
And you're selective about what you use?
Yes, and actually, the tool we use, Panorama, their, their questions are public, so on their website, they have a full bank. Now, they do have way more than what we ask. We choose topics that are specific to our needs, so we looked at topics that related to Portrait of a Graduate and chose those areas. Um, but all of the questions are out in the open, they, they're very, uh, transparent that way.
Are parents notified before the surveys are done, and do they have the option to opt out?
Yes, there's always an option to opt out, and, uh, yes, they do have access. So we send those, um, just the big bank of questions to the principals every year. We tried to line it up with, um, with MAP assessments, so the beginning and end of the year, because that's when we do goal setting and looking at where students, um, have made progress over the years. So we want social, emotional and academic data to kind of be together to see the whole child needs. Um, so every time those come out, principals put them out in their newsletters and things like that. But anybody could look at the questions anytime.
But the administrator, the building administrator should be notifying families that that's happening.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My final question, as, as those surveys happen, uh, when you see children that are struggling, is there notification to parents, how, how does that happen?
Absolutely, um, and we have had some pretty significant situations where a student, um, kind of rated that they didn't have any skill levels. They were marking zeros for everything, and we, um, it was a student that was not on anyone's radar, and the counselor, uh, the teacher notified the counselor, and the counselor pulled the child in, the child was actively in suicidal ide- The child was actively in suicidal ideation and we were able to create a plan for that child and and help him because of that data. But yes, anytime there's any concerning, just the way a parent would get their academic student data, they would get their SEL student data as well. Um now, there are are some of the Pride survey like we were just talking about, we don't get um broken down by student data. So Panorama is the only um student survey that we get actual connect can connect answers to a student. The rest are all just demographic connections.
So Pride is anonymous basis.
Correct. Correct. It's anonymous. Mm-hmm.
Can we receive a copy of the PowerPoint?
Absolutely. Yes.
And then if parents have or family members have questions, can they contact you directly?
Absolutely. I've had, and and I'm glad that you brought up, there's been concerns because I've had calls and I've met with several parents and and we've always had a great conversation and I welcome all the questions. And I want everyone to feel comfortable with what their kids are learning and um knowing that we have their best interests at heart. And I would love to have those conversations.
Thank you, Lori.
And can you share perhaps like a couple of the lessons that are used as an example in the elementary school for some of the self-regulation and just so people might be aware of what they are?
Sure. Um a lot of the skill set is going to be, it's it's not going to necessarily say when here's an emotional regulation skill, but it's going to be more preventative in conversation. Like the sources of strength talks about the things that lift us up. So you know, when they talk about physical health is one of the areas that is um in there. And they talk about what about what physical activities help you feel better when you're down, help you when you're stressed. And they kind of build out those um different things that that work personally for them. And they give them a scenario and say, what would you do in that situation? And and they will um apply one of their skills that's personalized to them. So there is a lot of space in that curriculum for what's personal to you. Um because what we do see is we have a lot of diverse needs in our students and um kind of giving them the, you need to find out what's right for you and work with your family on that and your family's values and all those things and and choose those things that lift you up. Uh but a lot of it's around that. Um we've morphed it in with a lot of health curriculums. So there's a lot of actual substance abuse um prevention in there. And there's nutrition and fitness in in those lessons as well. Um but that's one of the examples. And it's so another piece of the pie might say, like we talked about here, the trusted mentors. And it may talk about, you know, who is a trusted mentor in your life and what what things do you value in an adult that you can trust? And who are those adults in your lives and those kind of activities?
I don't know if this was part of this curriculum, but we saw a presentation from a health class that we were invited to.
Oh, Mr. Rapschers?
Yeah. Yeah. So would that be part of this social-emotional?
So yes, it is, but that is within his health curriculum. So he's a health teacher at the junior high level. And um mental health is part of that curriculum. So he has, he has students do those fairs and set up booths and they share information about their research. And a lot of them choose topics that are right in line with the things we're talking about.
Yeah, it was wonderful. They chose mental health, a lot of substance abuse stuff, but just not just showing the the information they had, but telling us all about it, you know, looking us in the eye and speaking clearly. And some of them were very nervous, but they did a great job.
Yeah. And I do think that's where a lot of um maybe the concern comes from too, is this that this brings up lots within the students. So there's a lot of conversation that comes up uh in classrooms every day that teachers are managing through and
Right.
and uh valuing student input, but also you kind of knowing the balance and of of how to share information. So I think um our students provide a lot of, a lot of great conversation and they're very open to talk about what works for them and and what they've learned.
Yeah, we said there was a group that was talking about marijuana use prevention. And if every student listened to them, they would never use marijuana.
Very impressive.
They were so passionate about it.
I need to talk to that student.
Do you know what this could do to you? It was, it was really, they were very passionate about their topic.
But I do encourage anyone with questions to reach out because um I think um it can easily kind of go in different places but of what we mean when we talk about SEL. Um but I'm happy to sit down and show anyone the things that we're doing and and we're really proud of them.
Great.
I just had, um Mrs. O'Connor asked some of the questions that I had, but just thank you for your presentation, but thank you for the work that you're doing. Thing is so important while we try to make, um while academics is our priority, it's it's very important that we um look at the whole kid.
Educating the whole child.
Because our kids are, you know, navigating through life and to have the support of the teachers and the staff and everybody else and teaching these skills are so very important. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Well, and you mentioned the data supports that this helps improve the academic results.
Absolutely. Time and time again, it's um highly evidence-based that um teaching those soft skills and teaching to the whole child makes academic growth grow just as much as SEL growth.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
I forgot it. Mr. Miller, you have other things?
I do. I have a a quick COVID update. You have my, you have my slides at your seat, I believe. Just to give an update on where we're at, this is where we're at for this year. Uh we've had four hundred and thirty-three positive students. Not sure if this is how you feel Pastor Pearl in church, but first two rows are empty. Um we've had over a thousand students quarantined. And then you can see our staff numbers, which um trends pretty well with where we were at last year. We also have positive cases by grade band. You can see where the levels are at and where we're up ironically, to me at least, junior high is um pretty low. Um comparatively speaking, we can take a look at the percentages of uh where our positive cases are at this year. This is again August fourteenth through October eighth, which was last Friday. And then again, over a thousand students quarantined. And then we've had twenty-six hundred students not quarantined because they were wearing a mask. Um and that's, again, we want to keep our kids in school, keep our kids active. And there's our numbers on our um staff as well. Um again, we talk about keeping kids engaged, keeping kids at school as much as possible, some way that we can do that. One of the examples would be West, if you're into sports, West Friday night couldn't play football because the school we were playing had um too many positive cases. But it doesn't just impact sports, it also impacts our band that night because that was senior night.
Yeah.
So um while they still had it and I applaud the administration and band and parents for getting that done, the crowd was obviously much smaller. So things like that impact us, but um we're doing the best we can. Any questions on that?
Mr. Miller, what's any difference between our numbers from last year and this year this time?
I mean, much higher, much higher in terms of positive cases and quarantine. But again, we're keeping more kids in.
Right.
Um we still haven't heard back yet from the governor or from um his team or ODH about that pilot study that the districts next to us are doing. So hopefully we get to be a part of that soon.
Any questions, Mr. Miller? Is that your whole update, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone have any new business?
I'll just mention, uh Mrs. Casper and I were at the Dakota District Parent Council last week. Had quite a few updates and we have President's Council on Thursday.
And this is, I don't know if this is new business or uh ongoing discussion on class sizes?
Yeah, we still, we still look at it. And we got that one email and I'll respond back to that one about COVID. Well, that's probably the biggest concern right now is the numbers there. So.
Are we considering adding additional aides?
We are. We are.
What's going to pull the trigger for that?
Um still waiting on on numbers to flatline, seeing what the impact is of the reading intervention specialist at kindergarten two. And if that's going to help or if that's not going to be enough, then we'll have to take a look at additional either aides or teachers.
And what's your timeline on making that decision?
Soon as possible. Hopefully before the next board meeting.
Good. Hope all the building where there isn't any more rooms.
It's pretty tight, yeah. It's not as bad as some, though.
Okay. Um we have no board action items. Uh treasurer's recommendation. Any of those you need to discuss, Jenny?
Um an update on item C. So you might recall the Millikan Exchange TIF agreement and we had that presentation by Liberty Township.
Mm-hmm.
Um well, after it was approved and as they were going through and looking at all the details and looking at all the parcels that were included, because you have to list all of the parcels that would be included in that area, there were a few that were missed. And so this amendment is just making sure that no one is missed. So there's no change to the compensation agreement that was part of that um TIF. There's, there's no change to anything other than there were a few parcels that were missed. And so we have to go back through the process and approve an amendment. So that's why that is um before you denied. And then um I know Ms. Kills mentioned this um during public comment, but we do have the transfer into the rainy day fund on the agenda, um which would take our um our rainy day fund, our budget stabilization fund up to about seven million dollars. So um it's a good thing to celebrate when we have the option to transfer into the rainy day fund. And and by policy, um if you have an operating surplus, then you are in that position. And so that's where we sit today. So.
And that's in addition to our cash balance that's in excess of a hundred million dollars?
Correct. That is correct. We anticipate, we ended last fiscal year with over seven months of cash in our general fund with five million dollars in our rainy day fund. Um and we are anticipating that we will um continue that trend. And we're, we're gonna look at the five-year forecast in November. And so we'll dig into all of these changes that have been happening with the new state funding formula, um Esther funds coming our way. But um on the financial front, stable and in a good position.
Jenny, it might be worthwhile to explain the difference between the budget surplus and the rainy day fund.
So a budget surplus and operating surplus just means that we're not in um a spending deficit. It's a spending surplus, which means that our revenues were more than our expenditures. We had a balanced budget. Um and this year it will be um ten years. It would be a decade when we finish this year um of operating with a balanced budget. So when we've had a balanced budget and our um revenues exceed our expenditures, then we are in a position where we can look at transferring into our rainy day fund.
And there are more restrictions on spending the rainy day fund?
Absolutely. The board policy says that there would have to be separate board action to say exactly how you wanted to spend that money. So Mr. Miller or I could not move that money, spend that money. It is a board decision. Um and you would have to approve any expenditure made from that rainy day fund.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Can I need a motion for treasurer's recommendations A through D, please?
So move.
Second. Mrs. Logan, when you're ready, you may call the room. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a recommendation for superintendent recommendation or motion for superintendent recommendations A through C?
So move.
Second. When you're ready, Mrs. Logan. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
We've reached the part in the meeting for our second public comment and the first person I have on the list is Sheridan Rajoy.
Part of my time, right?
No, you're good.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sheridan Rajoy. I live on Ambleside Drive in Westchester. This has been, there has been in our community, a lot of discussion recently concerning equality and equity. Some have even been, some people have even stated that they support equality but not equity. Every experienced educator understands that we cannot achieve equality in our educational programs without recognizing the need for equality and equity, equity especially. Equality simply means that every student has the right and opportunity to attend a public school. Equity ensures that those opportunities are fair. We know that every student doesn't come to the table with the same educational preparation, stable family environment, socioeconomic advantages, emotional maturity, or even self-confidence. Any one of these factors can easily affect a child's success in school and possibly hold that child back from achieving his or her full potential. So we make accommodations and we put programs in place to help level the playing field and give every student a fair and equal opportunity to achieve. That is what equity training does in a school system. Adherence to the principle of equity provides ramps and elevators so that a physically challenged child can have full access to the school and all activities. It provides a child who is sight or hearing impaired with related services that enable that child to hear what is happening or see what is happening during the school day. It demands an individualized educational plan could be provided for any student who has a learning or developmental challenge. And it allows teachers to recognize that a child might be experiencing a family death or divorce and might not be up to par to participate that particular day. You can't have true equality without understanding the principles of equity. And that is something Lakota has done very well for many years. I applaud this administration and professional staff in this district who every day do their best to make each child feel recognized and appreciated and who try to the best of their ability with the time and resources at their disposal to give every student the tools and learning environment that will enable them to reach for the stars. Thank you for putting students first and for having a comprehensive diversity, equity, and inclusion plan for this district. You recognize that all, that although all students are created equal, not every student who walks into a classroom learns in the same way or has had access to the same advantages. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Mrs. Bodie? I don't believe we can do that, correct?
No.
We cannot do that. Excuse me. Mr. Mandel, I'm sorry, we we cannot, she cannot.
About six years ago, I asked the Lakota School Board to put your finances online when I was Treasurer of Ohio. I created a website called ohiocheckbook.com. Uh out of three thousand nine hundred sixty-two cities.
We cannot, sir, please. Gosh, I have to ask you to stop, please. Pardon me?
Yes, I think, I mean.
That's a point.
That's only option, I think.
That's the only option. If I won't, I would take.
I'm here speaking on behalf of.
Take a break. I'd like to take it, we're gonna take a recess. We're gonna take a recess.
I'm also here as a father and I'd love to be here to defend my dad to go off masks on the kids. I know you're afraid to hear this message. I know this is a public meeting, but I'm just gonna communicate a message.
Good evening. Kristi Erdl, Princeton Road Liberty Township. I just wanted to share with you guys a homework assignment that was given to my daughter. She's eighth grade at Liberty Junior School. I just think it's interesting and I would like for, for just you guys to understand what's being taught to our kids. The first page, and this comes from the, the website New Zella, which I know has been an issue in the past. You know, many members have maintained that critical race theory is not being taught in our classroom. However, after meeting with the curriculum director, one of the issues is the fact that these are approved curriculums outside of the standard Lakota curriculum. So from New Zella's website, my daughter and her classmates were forced to read an article that was to defend the position whether or not Colin Kaepernick is an American hero for taking knee to the National Anthem. I just wanna read some of the, you know, context that that was put in. Says, "I have a bulletin board behind my desk with pictures of about two dozen African-American men and women who have had their lives lost at the hands of police violence and white supremacy." Goes on to say, "How as I am a black educator, have this bulletin board on my wall and make social justice a theme in my classroom each and every day, and then get up and pledge allegiance to a country that has made it so clear that my life does not matter. In a country where white supremacists have been emboldened by the current administration and black people, immigrants, Hispanics, LGBTQ students have lived in fear every day for the past year, I realize it was completely disingenuous of me to stand for a pledge when the words do not apply to my life. Until America does better, I will not pledge allegiance to a country that is complicit with racism and police brutality." I just wanna remind you guys that my daughter is 13 years old. She's in eighth grade. What took place after this was the fact that the classroom then had to divide into four groups and argue their position at 13 years old. Was Colin Kaepernick an American hero for taking knee? I have an issue with this. I think it's also important to understand if every student and their perception matters. My family, my husband has served in the military for 12 years. He fought two tours in Iraq. He's been on multiple deployments. I assure you, never will my children take a knee to the American flag or the National Anthem, ever. The only knee that my family will take is to Jesus, period. So please understand and hear me. I understand that you guys are doing your best. I understand that this is a contentious issue, but hear my heart on this. This is not okay. And if our district is approving this and paying money for New Zella and Learning for Justice, I, right now, here tonight, ask you immediately remove this from the ability of teachers to pull curriculum. This is unacceptable. This is unacceptable. How does it foster diversity? How does it foster inclusion? How does it foster unity among our students?
Thank you.
Thank you, Erdl.
Hi, Suzanne Bruce, 4985 Stone Valley Lane. I just wanted to commend you guys for bringing SEL into the classroom more than it was in the past. It's even taught at the preschool level. As a parent, I really appreciate it. My children have come home and they've talked to me about what they learned in class on how to self-regulate. They teach them breathing exercises and different things like that for them to be able to recognize how they're feeling and how they can adjust and how they can make themselves feel better. So our family has really appreciated the program and we've really benefited from it. And for, as a parent, it, it has helped me because it's teaching them skills that maybe I would not have thought of. So I really appreciate that you've expanded this because last year we did a little bit, but this year we're learning a lot more. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Addy?
My name is Isaac Addy, 5018 Reiter Ridge Drive, Westchester. My question is, the first question is, how long is the board supposed to meet in each session? That's one. The second one is, we know, I can understand if we have 30 minutes allocated for the first session for public comments, but if at the end of the, the, I mean, at the second session, why wouldn't we allow everybody, instead of limiting to the 30 minutes? Because I realized that the last time, some people were stopped from making their comments. And that affects the entire community. We represent, I mean, you represent a community. So if you don't create more time for them to share what is in their hearts, they go back home frustrated. So that's my question. Is there, is there a way we can make an amendment on the second sessions to ensure that everybody on the floor have their views heard? Because that is what America is all about, freedom of speech. And also we should not use, I mean, force, stop people because some people have issues that are so, so touchy to them. Like this lady that almost, her son was almost having a suicide. That day she had to leave. So we should make an amendment, accommodate people like that. So that's my issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Crawford?
Good evening. My name is Rebecca and I live on Cincinnati Dayton Road in Westchester. I'd like to address the school board members tonight to discuss the hot topic of freedom. Do you believe we still live in a free America where we have inalienable rights? You hear voices from both sides, pro-mask and anti-mask, pro-vaccine and anti-vaccine. Tonight, I don't wanna pick a side and I ask that you don't either. To keep it simple, let's get back to our roots, freedom. Let the parent decide what is best for themselves and their child. When it comes to masks and vaccine, there is still so much we don't know to draw a line in the sand. There's such a rush to find a solution that common sense has lost its place. What happened to common sense? What happened to freedom? Tonight, members of the school board, I ask that you look back and remember the time when you were growing up, the choice that you had that now is being stripped away from this generation, our kids, and soon to be grandkids. The, the talk is we are doing this for our safety. But the way I see going forward, this is the way every single virus will be, will be dealt with because so many have given over their freedom for fear. Many like to point to the CDC when they, when, when did they become a part of our government? They are there to recommend but not enforce. In the same token, schools should be here to advise and not enforce. At the end of the day, our health should be our choice. When will this end? When will we go back to common sense living? Our focus should be on medical freedom. Because if we take this stance on masks and vaccines, what is next? And if mandates are the desired approach, then should we not be mandating healthy habits? No fast food? Everyone must run 10 miles a day? Hit a daily vegetable, fruit, and water quota? Would you consider implementing a health regimen? Everyone is quick to side with the band-aid approach. Let's throw a mask on it. Let's take a vaccine. We would not need all that if we focused on building our immune system. But the sad truth is, that approach isn't profitable. If our focus was on building our, I'm sorry. God created us with a working immune system, but the way we eat and exercise contribute to how our body will respond to a virus and to disease in general. If our health is really the topic at hand, then let's have that discussion. Let's not discriminate. And that's what is happening here, those who choose a different approach to their health. Please choose freedom, not mandates. Let the choice be given to the individual. If masks work, then the person wearing one should be accepting of those who choose not to. If vaccines work, the person who took one should not fear those who did not. If someone chooses to live in fear, then that is their choice. But don't force everyone to live in fear. God did not give us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind. At the end of the day, those that are not blind and choose to see can see and will see that this is a spiritual battle. There is clearly an agenda. Please ask yourself, what Jesus had asked us in the Bible? What does it profit a man to gain the whole world if he loses his soul? Please don't make your choice for our kids based on a political agenda or your attempt to further your career. Do what is right and choose freedom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, everyone. We've come to the portion of the meeting for closing comments. Mr. Miller, would you like to start?
I'm really gonna address.
No.
Just, the only thing I would say is just a reminder that there's now a button that's pretty prevalent on the website. It's called Lakota Listen. So if you have a question about any of the presentations tonight or anything else, you can go to the website and somebody on the team will get back to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
You know, I think we've come to a point where these meetings take a turn and we get to closing comments and I feel like I don't wanna say anything because I'm so afraid that somebody's gonna take my words. And, you know, we had students come tonight and I think so much happens. And then we get to this end point of the meeting and we forget that we had students that we were celebrating tonight for some pretty good things. I mean, these were students who earned our recognition, came, they were so excited. They wanted me to take a picture with the superintendent and them. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm talking. And I, I, I'm trying to be respectful when people are talking and I'm just asking that you respect my time. There was also some, some things that were being said about us refusing to be financially transparent and whatever was going on too. Wow. I, I feel like this district is in a better financial position than we have been. We keep saying that. There's been no way that we have been trying to hide anything financially. Any questions anybody has about any of the finances, reach out. I, I, I mean, I, we've sat down with the folks who are running for the school board and asked and answered questions financially, anything anybody has. There's nothing to hide here. I'm not trying, we're not trying to hide anything. But I just wanted to circle back to the students so proud to work in a district like this and to celebrate the students. So I appreciated them coming and their families and being so excited for that. And just wanted to say that. Yeah, they were so excited. And I know there were, what, two or three about, that talked about the cyber academy, which just got started, what, two or three years ago? So it must be working. So it's good stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks and congratulations to those students. And it's good to hear them give shout-outs to those programs and to their teachers too. We mentioned Mr. Abshire's science or health class that his students did a great job. Had the opportunity last week to do a session, facilitate a conversation about communication with a group of students from all over the Cincinnati area that are part of, that have Hope squads, just like Lakota East and West. And in fact, both of those schools have representatives at this training that they were doing. And Susanna Davis, who formerly, formerly Lakota East principal, was the program director there and she kinda led it and I had the opportunity to speak. And really, the, the kids from Lakota East and West, they were so engaging. They were excited. They're compassionate. And, 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 and that's why I love this district, because of our kids, the kids that we have. And we're fortunate to have, you know, Mrs. Brown and her team and, and teachers buy into the social-emotional learning part, which is, you know, part of that really shows that why, why we have Hope Squad. And it's, it's so important that we have those types of programs. But, but thank, thank, congratulations to those students. And I was, it was really moving and the mom who talked about, you know, thanking us for social-emotional learning. That's, and, and we hear everybody. I'll be honest with you, it gets difficult to hear you when, and, and I don't mind, you know, I don't think any of us mind being criticized, but when we begin to name call and stuff like that, it's really hard to, to, to really hear you. Don't mind hearing the frustration. Don't mind hearing the disagreement. There's gonna be disagreements that, that you're gonna have with us and, and we may have with each other, but we have to maintain some professionalism and, and there's always ways to do things and we, we just try to do things right. So, but thanks for coming. Big East-West game this weekend. Not, oh, sorry. Next week. Okay. I had it wrong in my calendar. I was excited.
Keep that excitement. Mr. Mrs. O'Connor?
You know, I, I agree with you, Jenny. I'm having a wild moment too, for a number of reasons. Accessibility to your elected officials to me is a, is a major tenet of good local government. And I really feel strongly that we have to continue to offer that. And we do have business that needs to get done at the board meeting, but that accessibility is really important to our community. And I'm not going to say that I always like what I hear during public comments. Sometimes it's very hard to hear. But at the same time, it, freedom of speech is what it's all about. Whether we like it or we don't, we still need to hear what people have to say and we have to be accessible. And I know, Mrs. Casper, you, you frequently remind us of the different ways that people can access us, but part of our board meeting has to be that continued ability to speak one-on-one with you, to speak to each other face-to-face. And I know you'll talk about the community conversation and we've been talking about ways to make that public comment section work better than it is. And so I hope that you'll participate in some of those upcoming opportunities. And like I said, accessibility is important. I am concerned about some of the changes that I saw in that proposed policy. And there's an old saying, if you don't listen to the whispers, you're going to hear the screams. And I think it's really important that we continue to listen and we're continuing to be accessible. So Jenny, I agree 100% on the financial transparency. I think we've come a really long way on that and can continue to always improve on it, but certainly appreciate that there's been a lot of good work that goes into that. I hesitated to bring this up, but at the same thing, I wanna, at the same time, I wanna say it because it goes along with some of this other stuff. So I serve on the Ohio State Board of Trustees for the Ohio School Board Association, which at this point in time is an affiliate of the National School Board Association. And there was a statement just released last week, which I couldn't be more diametrically opposed to when I hear parents called domestic terrorists because they're coming and speaking their piece at board meetings. And I don't think anybody up here regards our parents or community members as domestic terrorists and certainly don't stand in agreement with that statement by the NSBA. It was 100% inappropriate and I wanted to say that it was not approved by the states. It was done at the national level with very little approval there too. So please understand that at the local level, we aren't thinking that at all. We wanna continue to hear from our parents in our community, regardless of which side of the issues you're on. We still wanna continue to hear from you, even when it's hard. So please continue to attend the meetings and to be engaged. It's really important for your students. It's important for our community's youth. And we really need to have you here. It matters. Finally, most importantly, because our job as kids, congratulations to our student, our National Merit finalist. Proud of the good work. Understand the amount of time and energy and diligence that goes into making that happen. And we hope that they get many, many scholarship offers coming out of that. Hopefully, that's gonna be a tremendous reward. of the job, and I understand that. What I do object to is a three-rank circus for whatever agenda that might be. That is unnecessary for people outside of our community to jump up, bring cameras. It's just not necessary. It's not doing what we need to do, which is educate the kids, and it has nothing to do with anybody agreeing or disagreeing. I've sat up here for an entire year and listened to people that, and I don't always agree with everybody, but I've sat here and listened to them. What happened tonight was not necessary. So I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Luke.
Second. Is anybody? Anybody? I said second. Second, Mrs. Logan. Whenever you're ready. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.